Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Marmy?
Here. Next on the agenda, we have invocation by Mr. Johnson, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Let us be in prayer. After a week of meaningful independence celebrations, we come to you with thankful and grateful hearts for the freedom we have for our country, our city, our state, and as individuals. Bless our deliberations. Be with those who have experienced loss and bless them in their sorrow. Be with the joyful, the needy, the hungry, and fill their desires. And may we ever be faithful servants of your will. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
One of the Newark Catholic coaches lead the pledge if you'd like to.
Go ahead.
Just start what I do.
Our pledge is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we've got a coach in baseball who's doing a pledge. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. As the council will discuss anything that's on the agenda tonight, do we have anything? Mrs. Ford?
Yeah, I'd like to excuse Mr. Blake, who's at a computer conference, and Mr. Guthrie, who's trying to get home from vacation with a plane that's running late, so.
Okay. Second by Mr. Marmy. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have the minutes of the June 15, 2015 Newark City Council meeting. Do we have a motion to approve of?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 reports of standing committees this evening. Without objection, those will be received and filed. And under reports from city officials, we have Barb Jones, the Newark City Income Tax Administrator. The income tax revenue reports ending June 25, 15, I'm sorry, June 15, 2015. Without objection, that will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have communications. First, we have Mayor Hall.
Sure.
With a proclamation.
We are in celebration here this evening for something that happened about 30 days ago, I think. Guys, how about joining me up front here? Maybe over a little semicircle or wherever you want to fit in here. Anybody remember what was happening about a month ago tonight? I'd say, yeah, beautiful. Coach, why don't you come up here with me if you want to? I know you're the shy one, but move in here. Now, Mr. Marmy, are you in here? You want to join us right up here? You just seemed to fit right in in the fire tonight, so we have to have you up here, so great. We can get in here. Another state championship, great stuff, guys, all of you. Wonderful, wonderful stuff. So, as a result of that, I surely want to read another proclamation. Another's not a bad sign, so it's good stuff. So, whereas the Newark Catholic Division IV baseball team won the state championship after its 6-0 victory over Berlin Center Western Reserve at Huntington Park in Columbus, Ohio on Saturday, June 6, 2015, the city of Newark would like to recognize the championship players for their awesome overall record season of 22-11, their outstanding impressive eight-game playoff performance, where they outscored their opponents 48-7, and finally, for bringing home the eighth baseball state championship title in the Newark Catholic history books, its second in just three years. The 2015 Newark Catholic State Championship game was won by the following team players: seniors Joe Mormon, Rob Engel, Nick Calloy, Dashin Shackelford, Zach Kent, Mitch Willis, Gabe Morris, Brent Copeland; juniors John Erhard, Tanner Marmy, Judd Lewis, Jack Wolenberg, Mitch Lor, Zach Waller, Walker, Austin Kent, Nick Cavaney; sophomores Jody Mummy, Tanner Lake, Kyle Gibson, Drake Nance, Caleb Claggett, and not forget freshman Tyler York. The 2015 Newark Catholic State Championship win was led by baseball coaching staff head coach John Canizero, assistant coaches Danny Mummy, Ed Clark, Doug Marmy, Jacob Nelson, Rick Canizero, Tom Haycock, and assistant bat boys Ashton Cox and Shay Mummy. The city of Newark would like to congratulate the 2015 Newark Catholic baseball team, as well as other participating teams in the division, for making this another season of great baseball and great memories. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Hall, Mayor of the city of Newark, hereby proclaim Monday, July 6, 2015, as Newark Catholic State Baseball Champions' Day in Newark, Ohio, and encourage all citizens to support and recognize the accomplishment of this team's players, parents, and coaches. Congratulations, guys, everybody. Good stuff. Who's got something to say? Anybody? Mr. Marmy?
Go ahead. It's been a long time since the beginning of the season. All the practices that took place inside the gym, a lot of different activities that were very boring, runs, five-minute runs back and forth. I always say, and I kind of passed this long.
Were you more?
Yeah. Some of them. That champions become champions when no one is looking. No one saw these boys practicing in the gym when it was below zero outside, and countless hours in the small cramped quarters in there, going out on the field when it's freezing cold, when you're all bundled up, wearing long underwear and gloves and everything else trying to play baseball. A lot of things developed throughout the season with this entire group of boys. Seniors that just were tremendous leaders on the field and off the field. They did a lot. They realized and recognized their role on the team. They brought the team together. There was no such thing really as underclassmen, upperclassmen, it was just part of the team. At the beginning of the season, Zach Kent was someone who really stepped up this year and just as a senior drove a lot of different things, and he just, he was an example in practices and just making sure that he was always there and everybody just had to follow what Zach was doing. Zach ended up being one of the three pitchers that really carried us through the playoffs and also into the championship. And I think it just shows how he grew throughout the season because of the hard work that he put through. The seniors in August are going to receive the ring, as well as the entire team. The seniors are going to get that ring and they're going to think, wow, what an accomplishment, what a way to go out. It's just fantastic that they got a ring. The juniors, or I guess I should say the seniors-to-be, the juniors-to-be, and the sophomores-to-be, they're going to get their ring and they're going to look at it and say, wow, I want another. So, that work starts now, guys. Champions become champions when no one is looking. This summer, when none of the coaches are around, when no one else is there, that's when you become champions, when you do put forth that extra effort. A lot of you are playing different sports or baseball this summer, you're doing different things in the offseason, and that's what it's going to take to get back there, and that's what it's going to take to win another championship. But this year, it's been a fantastic journey with all of you. I've been proud to say that I was a part of it. Coach Canizero, excellent leader and mentor, and just somebody that I can follow, all the coaches. You know, you don't always like what we say. Jack, you don't always like how I pitch batting practice, but you know what? We are trying to help you out. And, you know, it's just the little things. Coach Nelson coming into the dugout at the end of the season just brought a little bit different spark to the team. And so, it's every little bit with everybody, and I really do appreciate the coaches that I was able to coach a long way. And, you know, there's brighter days ahead too, guys. And thank you, Coach, for allowing me to be a part of this. It was a fantastic ride, and I'm really proud of everything that these boys did.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Coach, you have a few words, or?
Yeah, I want to thank the city for having us here.
That's the easy part.
I've said so many things about them, I probably forgot what I said about them. It was quite a ride. Was that the first game? And then the two, two regional games? We were down, but not out several times in both of those games, and rebounded like we should. We took care of business. State final actually was easy compared to the regional, the state tournament, but that's because we played extremely well. And, but again, I've always appreciated the support we get throughout the city, and we'll come back and try it again next year and see what happens.
Sounds like good. Guys, we're very proud of you. City's very proud of you. I'm not sure you all know what you've accomplished, and, you know, one team in this division makes it to this point, and you guys did it, so. And I think Coach hit on it, and it's really, you never give up. It's amazing what can do probably early part of the season. You might've been scratching your head, but you didn't give up, and you'll learn that in life. For the seniors, I wish you the best of luck, and the juniors, we expect to see you back here next year. Good, good stuff, and everybody else.
Yep. One thing, and I'm going to make them do it. I want you to start over here. Say your name and what grade you're in, so then everybody knows who, we listed y'all, but let's, so everybody knows who you are.
Tanner Marmy, and I'm going to be a senior next year. Tyler York, I'm going to be a sophomore.
Brett Copeland, I graduated this year.
Nick Cavaney, going to be a senior.
Austin Kent, going to be a senior.
Jack Wolenberg, going to be a senior.
Zach Kent, I graduated.
John Erhard, senior.
Jody Mummy, junior.
There you go, good. Good stuff, good stuff, guys. Thanks for coming in this evening, and again, we're very proud of you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, guys, congratulations. Nothing personal, but I look like I want to stay.
I can't imagine.
Next on communications this evening, we have three other communications. One from the High Division of Liquor Control Transfer Application for Park Place Distro from the Grill on the Square. Paul Moran, a copy of his comments from last council meeting, and Roger Loomis, a list of properties that are being sent to the auditor for liens and past due water, sewer, and stormwater bills. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens, one now before the legislation and one after. This is not a debate with council, this is just an opportunity for you to come up and be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak? This first section is citizens' comments. Mrs. Loomis.
Rhonda Loomis, 870 West Church Street. On June 29, when the administration was asking the Safety Committee and the Personnel Committee for solidarity and looking for ways to restore our shrinking general fund, I asked two questions, one of Chief Connor and one of David McElfresh, IAAF Union President. Chief Connor's question was, how many of our Newark Fire Department personnel work other jobs, and of those jobs, how many work at other fire or EMS positions outside the city of Newark's employment? He reported the following. Seventy-two firefighters, counting himself, are employed within the division. Twenty-five work at other fire EMS positions outside the city of Newark employment. Eighteen work at other-than-fire EMS jobs outside the city of Newark, and 29 have no outside employment. Forty-three of our Newark City Fire employees work other jobs, 60 percent. I will ask why the committee tabled legislation versus working in solidarity with the citizens of Newark to find a solution. Two reads would have given you a chance to do your research and discuss tonight the progress of your research, as well as the second read on July 20. That should be sufficient time. EMS legislation that was re-requested by Ms. Floyd and others had already been sent to you in May. I am concerned you're not taking this seriously enough to move fast enough in your research to make a difference in the deficit you have created. The second question had been to Mr. McElfresh, whose presentation was compelling in explaining the job they do, the seconds that count, and the firefighters who may be suffering from sleep deprivation. My concern, again, with 60 percent having outside employment and 35 percent of those with other fire EMS positions is that it is further taking away from my tax dollars of safety that I expect in return for paying my taxes and all of your salaries. I asked Mr. McElfresh if he knew the dollar amount of the overtime expended in his example of minimum staffing of 19, which seems to be the number the Fire Department requires at least to run properly and safely for us and for them. He started with 2005, so that was the year I chose as well. Mr. McElfresh answered promptly the next day by email the final tally for overtime. The citizens of Newark paid for 2005 with minimum staffing with $671,890. The accusation that came from someone on this council of mismanaging by not hiring the full-time firefighters as authorized by the Democrats on this council was out of line, not substantiated, and the number I just gave you for minimum staffing and overtime shows that no magic number exists in staffing for reducing overtime dollars. Only employees coming to work will cut overtime. The IAAF presentation proves that staffing level is not adequate for their safety or for ours as citizens. Why did you kill or table the legislation to help solve both firefighter safety and the citizens of Newark's safety and tax dollars? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loomis. Anyone else for this first section? Again, there's one more after the legislation. Okay. Let's move on. Ordinances on the second reading, 15-15.
Ordinance 15-15 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance annexing certain territory generally described as being 47.211 acres, more or less located in Newton Township to the city of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 15-15. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-15.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Ms. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-15? Seeing none, autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-15 passes 8-0. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 15-18.
Ordinance 15-18 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring emergency.
15-18 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, so it only gets one reading. What does your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I would like to make the motion to...
Adopt?
Adopt.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-18? Seeing none, autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-18 passes 8-0. Next on the first reading, we have 15-19.
Ordinance 15-19 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending chapter section 220.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Newark, Ohio, to establish a policy of fair hiring.
15-19 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-20.
Ordinance 15-20 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending the position authorization tables of the city of Newark Division of Fire by reducing the position of captain by one through attrition resulting in a strength authorization of seven.
15-20 will be held for a second reading. Now, we've got resolutions on the second reading, 15-58.
Resolution 15-58 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-58. What does your wish?
Ms. President.
Mrs. Floyd?
I'd make a motion to adopt 15-58.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-58? Seeing none, autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-58 passes 8-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 15-59.
Resolution 15-59 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-59. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Ms. Hall?
Motion to adopt 15-59.
Motion by Ms. Hall, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 15-59? Seeing none, autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-59 passes 8-0. Now, we've got the resolutions on the first reading, 15-24.
Resolution 15-24 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation with regard to the retention of outside legal counsel.
15-24 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-61.
Resolution 15-61 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-61 will be held for a second reading. Next, 15-62.
Resolution 15-62 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into the attached agreement for infrastructure construction and cost reimbursement with the Board of Directors of the Park 70 Etna 2 Joint Economic Development Zone and Prologis and declaring an emergency.
15-62 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Like to make a motion to adopt 15-62.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marmy. Is there any discussion on 15-62?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
I would like to explain why this is an emergency, but I fear that I would fail miserably, so if you don't mind, I'd like to call in the law director for an explanation.
Okay.
Mr. President, the Prologis is planning a rather sizable improvement to a portion of this Jet Z2 that is on the south side of Route 40. They want to begin, we're involved in that Jet Z2 as a partner to the agreement. We also collect the taxes and disperse the receipts, and we're signatory to that agreement. They want to begin that construction here in the month of July and need us to take action promptly, and I believe just this afternoon, the Board of the Jet Z adopted a similar resolution in their form, so Prologis is hoping to turn dirt any day now.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. It's much more to look for than I could have done.
Amen. Anyone else? Autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-61 passes 9-1. You want to call the roll vote? Mr. Guthrie?
Oh, Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
He's here. Next, we have 15-63.
Resolution 15-63 by Ms. Hall, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
15-63 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-64.
Resolution 15-64 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mrs. Marmy?
Make motion to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution 15-64.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, waive the two-day reading rule, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy?
Yes, we have a payout in here, and we need to expedite in order to get those funds to the individual as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Autops call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make motion to adopt 15-64.
Second. Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any other discussion on 15-64? Seeing none, autops call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
15-64 passes 9-0. And that concludes the legislation this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have a second opportunity for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone who would like to comment? Ms. Moran? Shopper, did you have your answer?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. Just want to share these items are here. I noticed there's been a marker placed on Union Street, which is in remembrance of the Hopewell Burial Mount, where Hope Timber is. It's very detailed, and I hope each and every one of you will go out there and read it and may take pictures and stuff of it. It's got pictures of maps and stuff of native history and how the Burial Mount looked when it was there, before Logport came in and wiped everything out, the canal. It was really a beautiful area. Mind you, mountain builders. So, it's something to check out for everybody, it's a city resident. Last week, they finally tore down 21 West Canal Street over here, and they got to fill it in, so it's just all dirt now. over with me and looked at it and saw there was no roof and the floor area, it was in the basement and there was pigeon droppings all over the place. So I'm glad it's gone and that is a step forward and it's real progress, something like that. But we also have other buildings around the city that's just in badish shape that need to be dealt with. I'm sure, I know there's safety hazards with them, probably more pigeon droppings in those buildings as well. So hopefully we'll go after those and get them addressed as well. I want to give a thanks to Ben Franklin Elementary and Vineyard Grace Fellowship Church for their youth activities last month that they held in the South End. They are weekly, Ben Franklin had theirs on Thursdays and the church had theirs on Saturdays. And it was really nice that they did that for the youth and I hope more groups will all get involved and do things like I have for them throughout the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Mr. Crawford?
Daniel Crawford, One Sixty-Three, South Second Street. Usually I have this repaired, but apparently it wasn't repaired anyway. We all need to go places, whether our destination is to and from work, school, the store, or even a routine doctor's appointment. The ability or inability to travel can free or imprison an individual. Despite the crucial nature of this particular issue, I don't see enough being done by the City of Newark to demonstrate that it recognizes such. Yes, I realize that our city transit was merged with the county, but does that mean we've completely washed our hands of the obligation to take care that our fellow citizens can remain mobile? Is there nothing that the city can do to improve said mobility? First and foremost, the people of Newark lacking reliable transportation are harmed by the absence of an adequate public transit service. For whatever reason, they don't have a car and that serves as a hindrance to them finding a living wage job. In a cruel twist of fate, their hurdle to finding a better job, or a job at all, prevents them from being able to buy a car to begin with. Don't these people deserve an escape from the abyss of poverty? Would it be too much trouble for our city and/or county to give serious consideration to a fixed route busing system? Do we think that it is acceptable to ignore this mounting demand for something more than the current framework? No community can thrive if every person is left to their own devices or made to rely on a service which requires you to schedule a ride days in advance. Life is far too unpredictable for this to work out in the long term. What the people require is a service that they can count on being available when the need arises. When it comes to walking around town, every one of us knows that there are some parts where you are gambling with your safety, all because you are forced to choose between walking on the grass, often through someone's yard, and walking along the side of the road. How can our city be appealing to any newcomers if pedestrians can't safely walk about? Just like with the lack of transit, our lack of sidewalks can be prohibitive for job seekers. Furthermore, it endangers our children unless we are implicitly declaring that no one with children is welcome in these areas. Yes, providing more sidewalks means more sacrifice. Some businesses and residents alike will have to lose a section of their lawn, but I would like to think that it is better to lend a relatively small slice of land to the public's benefit than to risk having children play dodge a car each time they try to leave their house. Wouldn't our collective conscience be clear for helping to avert this dangerous duel between man and vehicle? Or are we content with rolling the dice on this one? If doing something to enhance the mobility of Newark citizenry can't be motivated by compassion alone, then we ought to examine how the present situation hurts our local economy. Would it not be better for business, particularly our small businesses, if consumers were able to safely ride, were able to safely ride a bus or walk through a series of sidewalks to and from these establishments? Again, if more people had some form of reliable transportation, there would be more consumers, period. Invest today in the necessary improvements for our ability to get around and it will make more, for more, for a more prosperous tomorrow. This is a transportation issue, a safety issue, as well as a jobs issue. It's also a streets issue when you look at the big picture, since busing services leads to less traffic congestion, thusly reducing the wear and tear on our roadways. If we want this city to grow and to succeed, we must be serious about transportation. Fortunately, I am hopeful that our conversation here has only begun. Now, usually, of course, I just, you know, leave, but I want to make some comments about last week. Now, I know I've made some comments here to ask for more spending of taxpayer money about things, I realize we are a city with limited resources. And that limited, those limited resources, for whatever reason those exist, lead us to have some impassioned debates about things, especially about our safety forces. Now, I'm, I have my own personal feelings about the tabling of that issue last week and personally I was supportive of it, but I understand the reason for, you know, those who are angry about that. But at one point during that meeting, we all know that there was a brief exchange between Mr. Roletta and our Safety Director. Now, I get why both were impassioned, but I really hope that moving forward, we can have a civil debate about these issues. Now, working together, we can come with the best solutions for our city and I just hope we can do that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Anyone else to see? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay. Ms. Fraser?
Good afternoon, Mark Fraser, Twenty-One West North Street, Newark, Ohio, Four Three Zero Five Five. Appreciate Mr. Crawford coming up here and speaking and I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity, opportunity to speak as well. I spent my time, Fourth of July, not all of it, I did go to several cookouts and see fireworks, but I was researching ordinance fourteen forty and ordinance thirteen forty-seven, the budgets for the general fund over the last two years. And so it was an exciting read and there was a lot to be said about the three hundred thousand dollars and three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars that was borrowed from the rainy day fund and from not paying insurance premiums for two times throughout the year. And so the greatest part about the meeting minutes is you do a wonderful job of typing what everybody says in there as well and for the public record. My last name is spelled wrong, it's spelled F-R-A-I-Z-E-R, for the record, but other than that, it was interesting to see what the debate really was. And the concern that I have is that we saw this issue coming at that time. We, and especially when we passed the legislation for the ordinance that gave the increase in wages, as we said, Mr. Guthrie, not to point you out, but you said in two thousand sixteen, we're going to have a hard year because with this and not having the increase in revenues and looking at our stream, our finances are going to be troublesome in two thousand sixteen. And here we are in two thousand fifteen where our finances are troublesome, we're trying to find the funds to pay, to have adequate firefighter protection. And, and it just seems like something that we should be more proactive with, is that if we understand what these issues are, that we have a two million dollar decrease because the state doesn't give us money anymore. And if we have decreasing income tax revenues, that we should really be addressing these things. And it's about being proactive and having these conversations before it's the last hour and we have to get this passed and we have to find a solution. And every month that we table this is overtime cost. And by tabling this, we don't solve the solution to, to this problem, we don't find a solution. And so I just encourage you guys to work on this and, and to work with the administration and find the best path forward and hopefully in two thousand sixteen, we can address what the underlying issues are for lack of income tax revenue and hopefully we can create a better city together. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Anyone else? Okay, anyone for the administration? Honorable and well-dressed Law Director? I know. You have it all. President? Thank you, Sassen. Ms. Hall?
I just want to take one minute and thank Majors Ronald and Diana DeMichael. They ran our Salvation Army here in Newark for seventeen years and were in the Salvation Army family for forty-some years, believe it or not, maybe forty-five years. And actually, the DeMichael family has thirteen members in the Salvation Army. Brother down in Florida that runs one, a son and daughter-in-law that runs the Lancaster one, so we're very fortunate to have people like that in the community. I was at their retirement dinner and it was quite touching in many ways and well deserved though and we thank what they've done Salvation Army's grown and become quite a facility over during their tenure. And we welcome Denise Martin in as a Lieutenant out of the Newark area, they'll be running the operation looking forward. So if anyone has a chance, I'd suggest they reach out and make a stop and just welcome her in. With that, I pass. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Mr. Raff?
Thank you, I guess I'll just say something brief about the firefighting situation. I hear a lot of people saying, no, not this, no, not this, no, not this, I don't hear anybody saying, let's do this instead. I don't have any other answers, but somebody fill up and say, let's do this instead. I don't care what it is, give us an idea, give us a suggestion, I don't want to hear it's not my job, let's do this instead. If you're going to say, no, 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 come back with, let's do this instead. And if we're going to do part-time firefighters or if we're going to continue to pursue that, then let's get some more information on that so we can make more of an educated decision on that. Congratulations to Newark Catholic for another state championship. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Roletta?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mr. Roletta, Mr. Bub?
I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub, Mr. Cost?
I will pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd.
Now, you know I will pass, so.
I knew, you were Mr. Guthrie, I was in there.
First of all, the ceremony at the courthouse on Thursday was wonderful, when they, they put up the historical marker and the four-H band was there, there was a nice crowd, it was very nice, the veterans, what group?
Service organization.
Service organization put the flags around the courthouse. It just was a very nice way to start Fourth of July weekend and we have a courthouse to be very proud of, even though we own the land and they own the courthouse, but it was just a very nice thing. In terms of transportation, I just wanted to mention that I know there are several things in the works to try to get some transportation for people. The beauty park over at New Albany needs, needs workers desperately because they're getting a lot of manufacturing jobs in. And in Newark, there are people at the Salvation Army, at St. Vincent de Paul, at several other groups around town who need jobs but don't have transportation to get there. And so I know United Way is working with these groups to try to set up some kind of a bus system that would come over, set up three or four pickup centers around town where they could pick up people, take them over, they would have decent jobs because I think the amount of money they're paying is, is decent money and that would be beneficial to all concerned. I like it when people are working to, you know, solve problems and I find that very, very, very helpful. I too congratulate Newark Catholic baseball team, it's always exciting when we have a team from this area that does well and to win a state championship is a, is a wonderful kind of thing. I understand people are frustrated about the tabling of the fire issue. I just say, from my point of view, I need more specific information. I was glad that our Fire Chief, Pat Connor, sent us a lot of information, I've been reading that and studying it, I have talked to both Pat Connor and Bill Spurgeon, I'm going to meet with them, I have a number of specific questions and it's fine to say, you know, this is, what we're doing is, is not working and we need to do something else and I agree. You know, we've got to find some way to, to protect the citizens of, of the community. I know from, from having been here eight years, that overtime has always been an issue and it's partly because of the way the Fire Department Week is, is structured. I see no problem with having a little bit of time, and I'm not talking months and months, but a little bit of time to look at more factual information because I'm sorry, once we head down that road, that's where we're going and it is a different, a total change for Newark. I need information before I can make a decision. I mean, I've, I've been working on this in my own mind and with my own research for weeks now, not getting a lot of sleep some nights. It is not, as Rhonda knows, when she was up here, it's not easy to be up here making these decisions. It is a tough thing and there are some times and that was a toughie and, and that will continue to be a toughie. And so it is not an easy kind of thing, but I don't think it's ever a problem to try to, to have some more information. And I will be meeting with, with the Fire Chief and with the Safety Director to ask my specific questions so I can get the answers that I need in order to, in order to make the decision. To that end, so you're aware, Mr. Blake has put out a call to have a public meeting to discuss possible solutions to, or questions, comments from citizens on the whole fire staff and issue. It will be Thursday, July thirtieth, at five thirty at the Public Library, he's already sent us out a room there. I think several of us will probably be there to hear what people have to say, but I'm going to make my decision based on the factual information that I have, not, not just on, on feelings because I, I must say, I agree with Mr. Raff, we've got to have a solution and it can't just be, I don't want this, it's got to be something that, that does solve the problem. To me, that's what we've got to work toward. And with that, I think I pass. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Guthrie, glad you made it safely.
Thank you, I, I want to apologize to Mr. President and Council and the citizens who are here tonight for, for being late, I was actually in Tampa, three hours and ten minutes ago. And thank goodness, I wish my flight wouldn't have been an hour late leaving, but it was. I had planned my entire trip, which partially was to go bury my brother in St. Petersburg's Military Cemetery, around being back for this meeting and I, so I do apologize, I really feel very bad about coming in late, I, this is sort of a difficult one for me. I appreciate the comments regarding public transit and both by Mr. Crawford, by Ms. Floyd. I think one of the things that's sort of a terrible frustration, you know, we have so much dysfunction in, in our Congress right now, you know, we have had stop cap transportation bills, it's almost like we're never going to have a permanent transportation bill, this has been going on forever. And it keeps communities at bay because they don't know what their options are because we don't have permanent appropriations to allow communities to move forward with transportation needs and of course, there's been cuts, both at the state and federal level in, in this area. It would be so nice, and I was thinking when Carol said something about transporting folks to jobs in those, in the New Albany complexes because we keep, we keep picking the paper up and pre, and reading of new jobs being created just on the edge of the county out there, but, but as was pointed out, you know, we have a difficult time getting our citizens there because of transportation issues. And it brings back to the days when we contracted with Coda and had two Coda buses going to downtown Columbus and I believe Ohio State twice every morning and coming back twice every evening. You know, maybe, maybe discussions between the county and the city could occur between Coda to see if we could get some transportation so that some of our citizens who have transportation issues can capture some of those jobs. I, the one thing, I think that Mrs. Floyd made good points regarding the fire issue, I've been watching it a bit from afar, but I have been, tried to stay on top of the issue. I, I think it's really crucial for us to go through a, a very thoughtful period as we make decisions and I agree that we need to come up with alternatives. I, I, you know, I know people get tired of me saying this, but you know, it's issues like this that are part of the reason I voted against the fire station. I had had conversations with folks early on about the location of, of the new stations being built and expressed concerns about that because, you know, I felt if we could logistically put it a little closer to East End, maybe we could cover a larger area with that and not be in a position of now this dilemma we have of the East End Station being closed the vast majority of the time. And so that, you know, continues to be a concern and I know it is for everyone, but one thing I want, I want to say because I know we all like the word, to use the word transparency. Well, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about Station Four, about the East End Station and, you know, at least one member of council was, has received a communication indicating that even with part-timers doesn't necessarily mean Station Four is going to remain open. And so I, I think, getting back to that transparency issue, I think, quite frankly, the citizens deserve to know because we've heard, of course, we've heard many rumors that Station Four is going to be closed and that a new station is going to be built near the ICE Arena that's going to have EMS personnel. We all know that response times in, in the, that area of the city are, are significant, we recognize that. But at the same time, you know, we do have a citywide election coming up. It would be a nice, a nice thought if our citizens could know when they walk in the polls November exactly what the plan is as far as Station Four, as far as whether there is a plan on the board somewhere for another station in, in West Newark. But I just, you know, so I hope those kinds of issues as we progress toward August the tenth, that, that more of those issues become public information, so. And I do, you know, I think Mr. Fraser mentioned being proactive, I think, I think that's incumbent upon all of us. I tried to be proactive by encouraging a different location for the fire station because yes, I could see a problem down the road. And so anyhow, well, with that.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Mr. Johnson?
I was going to comment about the courthouse, but.
Sorry.
That Mrs. Floyd, she does it all.
Yeah, that's right. And there'll be a street call for a street committee meeting next week.
And it seems fitting, Mr. Marmy, that you wrap this up this evening after that nice presentation over there.
I think that I've said enough this evening, so.
We're also going to have a finance committee?
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. And I guess all I have is just the bookkeeping thing, next Monday, five thirty we'll do committees, July thirteenth, and then our next council meeting, July twentieth, right here in this room, again at seven o'clock. Is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Raff? Second by Mr. Johnson, I'll prefer to say I was saying, ah. Thank you. Thanks for your attention, we appreciate it.